Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, November 23rd. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get started this evening, I'd just like to read something briefly here. This week, our community is deeply saddened by the passing of one of our high school staff members, Christian Garricki, a science teacher at Eastchester High School for over 20 years. Christian's knowledge, curiosity, compassion was hallmarks, and he had a positive impact on students and staff alike. At this time, I'd like everyone to observe a brief moment of silence in honor of Christian. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and an early happy Thanksgiving. Why don't we get started, and hopefully people have to go home and cook? So, first on the agenda is comments from the public on agenda items only. So if anyone has any comments on any agenda items, please come up to the mic, state your name, and your affiliation with the district.
I'm Weisman. I live on Garth Road. I have a student in Waverly. Would it be possible...
You're allowed to take your [BLEEP] with the mic. So, I have trouble hearing anyway, so...
Okay, cool. Sorry. I was just gonna say, would it be possible to, obviously not for today, but for the future, to have the estimated time for these type of things for the agenda items? Times, like one, you know, call to, you know, whatever, so that when people are looking at this, that you can reasonably have an assessment of like how long certain things will take, that type of thing? Is that possible to do? I know like at my job, you know, when people, when we usually have an itinerary, there's usually, there's some sort of timeline, so just for the sake of, for everybody, it's a small suggestion, if it's possible.
Okay. We'll consider it, but I'm not sure we can do it, because sometimes our discussions take lengthy times, and the presentations have no questions or a lot of questions, but it's something to consider. Thank you.
Presentations, though, they normally, if somebody's making a presentation, they're prepared, right? They kind of know how long it'll take, no?
All right, we'll take into consideration. Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, see, I thought you were getting up to comment. All right. All right, good. We'll move along to the second item, Students Reports, and I'd like to mention welcoming Morgan Tillinghast. Did I say that correctly? Okay. She's our new junior representative up to the Board of Ed, and I don't know who goes first, but go ahead.
I was just about to say something similar. Good evening. I would first like to start by welcoming our newest junior representative to the Board of Education, Morgan Tillinghast, who will be helping me alongside representing the student body and the school. Morgan, please introduce yourself.
Thank you for the introduction. My name is Morgan Tillinghast, and I am very excited to be the other student representative. Please don't hesitate to ask me questions or reach out with any concerns. Before getting started with the updates, we would first like to give our deepest condolences to the family and students of Mr. Garricki, as he was a loved member of the faculty and adored by his students. His brilliance, passion for teaching, and positive impact will never be forgotten amongst the school community. This past weekend, the Players Club held their first play of the year, and it was very successful. The cast and crew's hard work finally paid off as they performed Puffs, a play for anyone who ever felt like they weren't the hero in their own story. They were able to sell tickets online and have their show sell out for both performances. The show was loved by everyone who went to watch and was definitely one to remember. The Italian Club and Art Club are partnering up to create a beautiful mural of the Mount Vesuvius. This famous volcano is located near Naples, Italy, and is one of the most active volcanoes in Europe. It is most known for its eruption in 79 AD, covering Pompeii and volcanic debris and destroying this city. The collaboration between the two clubs works as the Art Club puts their finishing touches on the drawings of the mural, and the members of the Italian Club will soon be able to begin painting it. This mural will be located outside the language rooms for all seeking Italian and other languages to see. The Future Business Leaders of America, or FBLA, hosted a career night last week. This event invited parents of students in the high school to come and educate interested students about their specific jobs in the business world. It was a great opportunity to get to learn about different careers and even create connections for the future with a wide variety of professions.
One of Eastchester's biggest clubs in the high school, Habitat for Humanity, is off to a great start. This club is run through the Fuller Center of Greater NYC, a nonprofit volunteering organization that works to help communities in need. This month, there were many events that students could take part in. The first event took place in the Marinerneck, and students helped in fixing up poems and businesses that were destroyed by Hurricane Ida. They performed hands-on work such as repainting walls, installing insulation, and cleaning up debris. These local businesses were very grateful for the work the students were able to complete. Another major event was the Walk for Homes. Fifty-two members of the club met at Larchmont along with other people in the community and started a three-mile walk that raised awareness of the need to build affordable housing in Westchester County. Small donations were made that will go towards this cause as well. Eastchester's Government Organization, or EGO, is currently hosting their annual November Toy Drive. Students and faculty are highly encouraged to bring in toys that will be donated to the Neberhan Community Center in Yonkers at the end of the month. The National Honor Society has recently elected their officers for this year, and their induction is to shortly follow. They have started tutoring students in need of help in any subject on Tuesdays and Thursdays after school. As we enter the colder months, fall sports begin to wrap up their seasons if they haven't done so already. A huge congratulations to senior Amutka Kotapali, who represented Eastchester at the state championship for cross-country. She had an awesome race and finished 30th out of 118 student athletes in Class B and 116th out of 464 students in the state. Tryouts for winter sports such as girls' and boys' volleyball, cheerleading, wrestling, and winter track have happened, and they've started to practice for their upcoming games and competitions. Coaches will also have the opportunity to nominate one of their athletes to be named Student Athlete of the Month. These students are recognized for their passion for the sport and embody what it means to be an Eagle. The chosen students for the month are posted on social media and are in the works of being displayed outside the gym lobby for everyone to see. Thank you, guys, for your time, and as always, feel free to ask any questions and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Okay. Thank you both. Next on our agenda, do we have any questions for our students? Anybody? No? Okay. Next on the agenda, I believe, is a superintendent's report. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Board committee reports. So, do we have any, anybody want to say anything about any board committees? Yes, no? Going, going? Okay. None? Yes? No? Yeah, you're free to go home and do homework. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving to you both.
Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving week.
Okay. Next, we have superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you. We're going to jump right in. We have two presentations tonight. The first is from Ann Hutch, the Ann Hutchinson School team. I'd like to invite them to come on up, and we'll get the presentation started. They've been working very hard on a number of initiatives in their school, and I wanted them to be able to kind of talk to you about those. You've seen the PowerPoint. It's been on the agenda for a couple days, so you know what they're going to be talking about, but they are, I'm sure, will add a lot more detail. We're excited. We appreciate their time and all the great work they're doing. Followed with this report, we will have another, a report on the facilities plan and the updates. So, take it away, Dr. Keen, Principal of Ann Hutchinson.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for inviting Ann Hutchinson School to present tonight about our multi-tiered system of supports for social-emotional learning. Our presentation focuses on the following question, and it is a pretty big one. We asked, what research-based learning experiences can we provide for our students, and what systems and structures can we put in place for our teachers in order to ensure our students develop the social and emotional skills needed to joyfully engage in rigorous learning at school and to succeed in life? So it is a big question, and I am really proud to introduce this team of exceptional educators who are working so very hard every day at Ann Hutch to answer this big question and who are kind enough to share what we have learned so far on our journey with you all tonight. And so it is my pleasure to introduce Bianca Batiste-Skelpe, our school psychologist, who is in her third year at Ann Hutch. Bianca, if you want to wave to everyone. And I would also like to introduce you to two new faculty members, Shakira McKinley, who has filled the new and very helpful role of school counselor at Ann Hutch, and another school psychologist who is also new to our district this year and who Ann Hutch shares with Waverly School, Dana Moska. So without further ado, I will turn it over to Dana.
Thank you, Dr. Keen, for your introduction. So, as we get started, I just want to talk about what RTI and MTSS mean. So RTI stands for Response to Intervention, and MTSS stands for Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. So both of them are tiered levels of intervention, and throughout the district, we're referring to RTI when talking about academic support, and when we refer to MTSS, we're talking about both academic and social, emotional, and behavioral supports. So this is a tiered system of MTSS. So at Tier One, you can see that this is an intervention that's provided to all students in the school. At Tier Two, it's about 15% of students who receive Tier Two systems, and this is anyone who is not making any, not making progress through Tier One. And then when we get to Tier Three, we're talking about about 5% of students. And so these are students who are not making grade-level expectations in Tier One and So when we're talking about Ann Hutch's MTSS, when we talk about Tier One, again, this is supports that all students receive. So we're talking about things such as individual classroom behavior management systems, morning meeting, Coach Karidi's wellness push-in lessons, and also our HART program, which is behavioral expectations that are used throughout the entire school. And each classroom has a HART chart. They also, at the whole school, we have a HART assembly once a month. And then as of this year, we've implemented the Second Step Social and Emotional Curriculum. So Tier Two is about 15% of students, and this is more intensive intervention. So something could be an individualized sticker chart, a school and home communication, a check-in, check-out system where a student would meet in the morning and the afternoon with a mental health member. And this can also include one of our small group, social and emotional groups. So for this one, we need family consent for students to participate. And then our Tier Three intervention is again about 5% of the student population, and this is for students who have counseling as part of their individualized education plan or a 504 accommodation plan. It can also be a formalized behavior intervention plan. So when and how are students assessed? So we have three different times when we're going to assess students, during the fall, winter, and spring. So before we have, before we start these cycles, teachers are given a survey to fill out, and any students who come up as at-risk on the survey are going to be given some form of intervention. So these types of interventions could be an indirect intervention where the teacher would be consulting with a mental health team member. It could also be a positive reinforcement plan. We can also invite a student to participate in one of our groups, and if a student is participating in one of the groups, then their teacher would fill out a survey before they join the group and then after they join the group, so that we can test the efficacy
Sorry. Okay. So that being said, that's our new cycle at Ann Hutch for the social-emotional piece. And what we decided to do tonight was pick two Tier One highlights, because as a district, we've been moving to bolster and strengthen our academic Tier One supports for all of our students, so we're trying to kind of mirror that in terms of social-emotional learning and support for teachers. So the first new Tier One support or intervention that we've been using at Ann Hutchinson School is the use of a screener. And basically, teachers are asked at the end or middle October to rate how often they observe specific behaviors on a scale from zero to three, and it's included by all teachers for all students in the building. And behaviors, it's across nine areas. It's sorted into either internalizing or externalizing behaviors. And when we say internalizing, we just mean perhaps anxious behaviors, students who may be withdrawn, have some social skills difficulties. And when we refer to externalizing, those are students who may exhibit difficulty with following routines, impulse control, or some sort of peer conflict. And so depending on teacher feedback, scores can either fall into one of three categories, so low, moderate, or high risk. And these results are actually reviewed alongside, so with every teacher, after we discuss our FNP, which is our reading assessment, and after our NWEA, which is our math assessment. So we discuss all three at the same meeting together to try to have a whole student approach to our progress monitoring. And just some more information about the screener and why we opted to go with this particular screener at Ann Hutch. Firstly, it's because it is intended by its creators to be a universal screening tool. It's very quick, and it's for teachers' ease. It's also intended by the creator to be used three times a year, which falls in line with our progress monitoring schedule for academics. It's also a tool to be used to inform our instruction as educators and used to identify students who may be at risk. So it's kind of an ongoing conversation. And it's only one of multiple data points we use to indicate risk. So, you know, just the screener is not the only thing. We use teacher feedback, family feedback, articulation from prior school if it's a new student, you know, it's just one of many data points we use. And then on the flip side, what it is not is, you know, we don't use this screener to make any sort of high-stakes decisions. It's not to label students, which is why it's framed as asking teachers to describe observable behavior, so do you notice anxious behaviors, instead of labeling a student as anxious, which is not what the purpose of the screener is. So what have we learned? So this is our first fall really using this for our entire student population at Ann Hutch. So we just kind of sorted into those internalizing and externalizing behaviors, and to kind of, we tried to make it as simple of a graph as possible, but our major impressions is that it's mostly positive, that the overwhelming majority of students at Ann Hutch across all of our grade levels, according to teacher report in the fall, were at very low risk for internalizing or externalizing behaviors. So about between 76 and 86% of students, which when we look at our MTSS triangle, it kind of falls in line with the expectations. Two other trends we did notice was that for older students, there was a slight more at-risk for internalizing behaviors. When you look at fifth grade, it's a slightly higher at-risk, and then on the flip side, second grade was noted to have higher risk for those externalizing behaviors, which again is not that surprising to us at least, because we're typically, younger students do need more of that explicit skill training and just developmentally at a different place developmentally than our fifth graders. So that being said, we tried to figure out, okay, so what are we going to do with all this information? So right now, when we added up all the data that we have and what students are or are not getting, at Ann Hutch School right now, about 88.94% of students are responding appropriately to our Tier One interventions, which is great. And it's kind of actually above that ideal number we get with between 80 and 85%. So that was a good piece of data for us to know. So then secondly, right now, about 7.14% of students are receiving that Tier Two level support. And again, that also is differentiated and varies across grades. So right now, we have more students in second grade receiving explicit scale-based counseling, whereas more of our older students in fifth grade are more able to self-monitor, and they've learned strategies over the years, and so we have less fifth graders receiving explicit skills training right now. And then our last bit of data, so 6.45% of our students are receiving Tier Three support. And I think for Ann Hutch as an individual school, you know, we do include our special education classes in our MTSS framework, so this includes students who have behavior plans, who have social-emotional goals on their IEPs, but we do have general education students who have social-emotional goals as well. But just to note, we are including our special classes in this framework. So now I'm going to turn it over to Shakira to talk about Second Step, which we do think is contributing to our pretty positive Tier One support right now, so.
Thank you. Good evening. Okay, so let's go back to basics. What is social-emotional learning, or SEL, in our Tier One? Social-emotional learning is a process that helps students acquire and apply these five skills, these five domains of skills. We have self-management. Our students are learning to monitor, regulate their own emotions through our Second Step curriculum, our social-emotional learning. Students are becoming or increasing their awareness of self, so they're being able to recognize and identify their own feelings as well as the feelings of others with, through social awareness. Students are able to maintain their social relationships and make more responsible decision-making. We'll talk a little bit more about the program we're using to facilitate this. Our social-emotional curriculum is called Second Step. It is a culturally competent, research-based program that uses a variety of modalities to deliver its content to students. Students are engaged in videos, pictures, similar to Socratic seminars, so they're having discussions in class, they're prompted, they have activities, they are working with their peers. There's an opportunity for students to continue the work that we're doing together in the classroom with their teachers and also at home with families. What is the purpose of social-emotional learning? SEL is a framework to help students develop skills. These students, our students are learning to better understand their own thoughts, their own emotions. They're raising awareness about self, they're developing empathy for others to use not only in our classrooms, in our communities, and at home. When we talk of a research-based program, I thought maybe it would be great to share some of the documented benefits of SEL for other schools that have used the program across the nation. We have seen gains in academic performance overall, increase in positive peer connections, an increase in school culture and climate, and students are overall feeling more connected to school and school staff. How is social-emotional learning taught in the classroom? So as the school counselor at Ann Hutch, I am visiting each classroom every other week. Students in the weeks that I am not visiting are practicing those skills more explicitly with their peers and with their teachers. I am, we are sharing this information with parents in our psychologist's corner, so parents also have an opportunity to help and, to help further the conversation at home with children. Teachers, again, are reinforcing the concepts. Our students and, I'm sorry, I'm also checking for understanding with teachers, in conjunction with teachers, and we're also reteaching some of these lessons as needed. Social-emotional learning promotes school and life readiness. So why are we here? Why are we learning? Why are we showing our students what social-emotional learning can do? We are trying to help students promote lifelong skills. Students are better equipped to deal with problems that affect them and therefore better able to navigate adulthood. So our students are learning skills to help them be more successful in the classroom, but they're also learning basic lifelong skills that help them prepare for college and career readiness.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate all the work you've been doing and your presentation tonight, and thank you for working so hard on gathering these data that really helps us understand what's going on, you know, and with individual students as well as across the entire school. And I know you've been working hard, and everyone should know that it's been a goal now for two years to put the Second Step program into place. That was a goal that was begun last year with awareness and was scheduled to launch this year more formally after some practice with it last year, and I think it's really gratifying and satisfying to see, you know, that it in place and how you've connected, you know, that program to an overall comprehensive MTSS system within the school. It's really exciting. If anyone has any questions for the team in Ann Hutch, this would be the time to ask.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if you have, you noticed anything, what jumps out at you as different this year after coming back to school after the disruption of the last, the last school year? Anything in particular in terms of student needs or student behaviors or that you're
Well, I think it was that concern that really sparked us to make a decision to have a very clear process for how we're capturing the progress of all of our students. I think in the past, our structure, to be honest, had relied a lot on teacher recommendation of individual students or family recommendation of individual students, and coming back, I don't want to say coming back from a pandemic, because I know it still lingers, but we wanted to make sure we had systems and data to represent all students. So, you know, the data in that sense is not historical. It'll be interesting to see how it changes over time as we move forward, but I think it, anecdotally, from interacting with our students, we felt that the majority was doing well socially and emotionally, and I think this data confirmed it.
Thank you all for putting this together and for your presentation. When I was looking at this, I was struck by, if we go back to the bar graph slide, I was struck by the level of at-risk students in the second grade, especially compared to the other grades. And it looks like we have over a quarter that are at high risk and over half that are at risk. Well, it looks, it's a little bit over 100% there, but in any event, it looks like the second grade is drastically different from these other grades, and I know you said, obviously, second graders are less mature. I mean, is it the same test that's given to everybody?
Yeah, so also, just as a statistical note, we did take averages, so we took the average of each individual class and then did like the average for second grade. So they don't all add up to 100, it's just the average per class, if that makes sense. But I, you know, to answer your question, we weren't that surprised, because second grade is also a transition year for our students. So when we think about this particular second grade class and where they were developed So when we think about this particular second grade class and where they were developmentally, I would say in March, which is kind of when the school went remote, coupled with the hybrid model, most of our second grade class has only been enrolled in school, with the exception of our specialized students, have only been enrolled in school full-time really since April twentieth of last year. So a lot of those externalizing, you know, and conversations with the teachers, it's more about like the those externalizing categories or behaviors capture what we call like school readiness skills. So being able to follow the routine, a lot more students just come in anxious because it's a new school building. Second grade is typically, you know, I've only been here for three years, but usually I have my most kind of check-ins with students for second grade, which is why it's great for Waverly. I consult with their psychologist there, who she usually even has kids come visit the school early. So we are curious to answer your question too, to see what the winter looks like, to see if this has kind of subsided as kind of this early beginning of the year transition. So that's obviously, I can't say that's why it's higher. That's just kind of my hunch, just based on prior experience with second grade in general.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I have a question. If you identify a student for either internal or externalizing behaviors that needs tier two or tier three support, how do you engage, do you engage the family and how do you engage the family? What does that process look like?
So since this was our first year using this particular screener, any student who came up as moderate or high risk in any category, since we were lucky to have our whole team there, we kind of parsed it out as individual students. So for example, some of our E N L students came out elevated for, let's say, internalizing behaviors when it's really in terms of their language development, that quiet period. So we kind of had to pick and choose which students we would take with a grain of salt. But any students who were moderate or at risk, the teachers and us reached out to parents to talk about what the concerns were, if there were any of concerns. And then any tier two interventions, we consult with parents. So we would say, you know, would you prefer? We try just check-ins initially. So we do need parent permission for any tier two or three support. So and we've had some parents kind of explain, oh, we just had a loss in our family. So this is kind of atypical for them. So then we'll hold off on, you know, school-based support, and they may actually ask for outside support. So it's kind of a case-by-case process, but we don't move to any tier two or tier three support without family consent.
Okay, thank you. Nobody else? Okay, good.
Once again, thank you very, very much, and we appreciate it. The next major item under the report tonight is going to be begun by Assistant Superintendent Lisa Sanfilippo, who's going to talk a little bit about the project that we've been working with you and talking with you on regarding capital, the capital needs of our buildings. And so we have two PowerPoints here. Our first one from from Lisa, and then there will be some more from our architect and engineering partners who will provide some detail. And then we'll be counting on you to have a little discussion.
Thank you very much. So this is, this is just going to be a pretty quick overview of the total capital construction process. Over the past few meetings, some questions have come up, which, you know, made me think that, you know, maybe some explanation as to how the whole process works would be helpful so that people understand the pieces of a project and what kind of goes into the development of a project. So let's get started. So how the process begins. The state requires that every district does a building condition survey every five years. And the purpose of this survey is so the state education department kind of puts on their radar what kind of capital work and building aid they can expect in upcoming years. It also gives them a guide to gauge if you submit a project, they want to know that that project has already been identified in your building condition survey, and they may push back and say, you know, why are you doing X project instead of Y project because that one seems more urgent? But that being said, it's kind of a blueprint for for our capital construction going forward. So in two thousand and ten, K G and D Architects did our five-year building condition survey. They rated all our buildings except for the district office as unsatisfactory at that time, which meant that it had systems in it, in the buildings that are beyond, either beyond their useful life or have failed recently or needed to be upgraded or repaired in some way, shape, or form. They identified over forty million dollars worth of work, which at that time included twenty-six million dollars for an addition at the middle school and at the high school. And we know that that clearly was not enough for for those two additions. In two thousand and fifteen, K G and D Architects again did the building condition survey. Again, all our buildings were rated unsatisfactory because none of those conditions had been addressed at that point. At that point, they identified over twenty-seven million dollars worth of work and upgrades that needed to be done. So our most recent survey was just done in two thousand and twenty by Mamassi, our new architects. And again, all buildings still rated unsatisfactory. They identified over forty-seven million dollars worth of work that needs to be done. So the point of this is that you can kind of see, if you take out the money that was in there for the additions, the number keeps growing over the years. Either the cost of doing the work is increasing or new systems are getting, systems are getting older and they are getting beyond their useful lives or they're failing or at risk of failing. So that number keeps growing. Some other considerations were, you know, in, were community and stakeholder input. A product of our community administration collaboration to improve security of the school facilities was resulted in a safety and security bond that was scheduled to be voted on last, I'm sorry, March of two thousand and twenty. And we all know that that was right when COVID hit, so that that didn't happen. So you should know that the safety and security work was above and beyond some of the infrastructure work that was identified in the building condition survey. And that was really done as, you know, we kind of heard from the community that they wanted some safety and security issues within our district addressed. So in conjunction administration, the Board of Education input, while contemplating whether we should go back to the safety and security bond again, it was recommended that we go bigger and address some of the critical infrastructure needs of the district in addition to the security upgrades that we were contemplating two years ago or a year ago. So the the capital construction process really consists of four major phases. The first phase is the referendum phase. This is the phase that we are currently in. And during that phase, once you've kind of identified that you want to move forward with capital construction, you engage architects and construction manager to develop a scope and a cost estimate. So a concept and cost is developed based on our building condition survey and the prior bond referendum. We are at this point concluding our speaker. It's a state environmental quality review process, and we're also assessing the potential financial impact, and we're estimating that at this point. The next step would be for the Board of Education to adopt a resolution and say to set a referendum date that's planned for the December fourteenth meeting with a vote tentatively right now for February. At that point then, project details are disseminated to inform the public about the vote, and we conduct community forums and we, you know, we put a lot of information out there so that the public is aware of what is in the referendum. And finally, the public votes on the referendum. A simple majority only is required to pass. If the referendum fails, the Board of Education and administration will determine how to address the facility needs going forward because we're still going to have systems that need to be addressed and infrastructure that needs to be upgraded. If the referendum passes, we will move on to our next step in the phase. So the next phase is a design phase. So the project design phase begins, and this phase cannot begin until the referendum passes, right? So we cannot start designing the project in detail until we have a passed referendum. So the design of the project will be segmented into multiple phases, beginning February of twenty-two if it passes, and continue until August twenty-four, of twenty-four. Each phase will vary in length between eight, three to eight months. Budget estimates are continuously monitored during these phases, and adjustments are made to the plan as necessary. Project plans are then submitted to the state education department for their comments, their revision, and approval. S E D review and approval can take up to eight to twelve weeks per phase. So this is a very long process of designing and getting approval from the state education department. And when we're talking multiple phases, we could be looking at a year or two of just designing and getting approvals in place to begin construction. The next phase is the bidding phase. So once S E D approval is obtained, the project will be publicly bid. New York State WICs law requires that the project be broken down into different segments for bidding. You must have a general contractor, plumbing contractor, electrical contractor, and heating, ventilation, air conditioning contractor. General municipal law requires that we award the contract to the lowest responsible bidder. If the bids are not within our budget, we may have to modify the design or scope and rebid. That could also add delay time to the construction of the project. The next and last phase would be the construction phase. Construction begins once we have awarded bids to contractors. Construction will occur in multiple phases, beginning July of twenty-two and continue through August of twenty-seven. This is a highly coordinated operation intended to maximize student and staff safety and minimize disruption to the educational process. Our construction managers will be on-site daily throughout the project to monitor the contractors and ensure that the project is built in accordance with the plans and specifications. So finally, I just wanted to to put out there that we are not alone in having a lot of infrastructure work to do. So Nanuwet, just a couple of weeks ago, passed a fifty-nine million dollar mostly infrastructure bond. Smithtown out on the island back in September passed a hundred and twenty million dollar bond. Edgemont last May passed a thirty-nine million dollar bond. Saratoga Springs at last December passed a hundred and thirty million dollar infrastructure bond. Rice City did a, in two thousand and nineteen, an eighty million dollar bond. Mamaroneck a fifty million dollar bond in February of two thousand and nineteen. Mayapac a fifty-four million dollar bond in May of two thousand and eighteen, and Scarsdale did a sixty-five million dollar bond in two thousand and eighteen as well. So just to kind of give some perspective and context that, you know, school districts have been dealing with these issues all around us, and, you know, we're just, we're not alone in this. It's just, it's our turn at this point. So if the Board has any questions about this, I'd be happy to answer any questions at this point. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to our architects.
Anybody? I have a quick question. On our past bonds, our building aid has been around fifteen percent or so? Is it still at that low rate?
No, I believe we're around thirty-eight percent. It changes.
Could you please check that and find out what it is for us so that if we're going to entertain something so large and we're out of line with other districts, maybe we could have a little advocacy campaign to catch up because those campaigns have been known to work in certain areas?
Yeah.
You know, so if you could just report back to us on that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now our architects, Tina from Mamassi will, we have some decisions to make
Hi, thanks for everyone for having us back. So we had a walkthrough with the Board of Education, as you all know, last week, was that, last Monday? And we walked through all the buildings and we came back with the feeling that we needed to look at the secure entrance at the high school based on some of the discussions and based on some of the questions we were asked. So we did that. And before going through that, what we wanted to talk about is how we got to where we are right now in relation to this particular vestibule at the high school. So the the drawing that is up was from two thousand and nineteen, September of two thousand and nineteen, and it was when we began studying this, the design of the high school vestibule. We looked at several different options. At this point, we came back with two, two options. Option one on the left, which provided a secure entrance vestibule where you see it with some exterior steps. And then option one on the, option two on the right, which is sort of the, the evolution of where we are now, is the stem of this, of this option. What you see is looking at the pros and cons for each of these particular options and essentially why we landed where we are right now, at least at that time. So for example, option one, pros of option one, so that's the image on the left, the security officer has limited visibility, but some visibility to the exterior. There are no interior modifications to the existing entrance, which in this case is this area. Did that just change? Sorry. The cons, option one was a multi-point entry, so it doesn't resolve the single-point entry. The security officer has to leave their post to allow for someone to access who may need some assistance into the, the entrance number two. And there's the addition of the exterior steps that require more maintenance to maintain. Option two, put the steps in the interior of the vestibule, which is what you see here, but still had ADA access from the existing entrance. So the pros of this were that the security officer had direct visibility, because that's that space out here that is part of the new construction. The ADA check-in happens with the security officer, and the interior stair avoids any additional maintenance on the exterior of the building. The cons of this one were that it was really an inconvenience for anyone who required accessibility. So at the time, the Board asked us to, to consider option two, but to extend the vestibule to incorporate the entrance, the existing entrance, which is here. So this is the evolution of option two, where the building addition, anybody who comes in, any visitor or student checks in and enters directly through this space, and if there's required ADA access, they come through this space. The pros of this are that there is a single point of entry for all, including ADA accessibility because they're already in the vestibule. The security officer has direct visibility to the exterior, and it allows for us to isolate the building areas after hours. So this door has the potential to switch direction, be closed off to provide some separation during after-school events, particularly at the auditorium.
I'm not sure if it's the angle you're seeing, whether you're saying like this door or whatever. I'm not seeing. Mouse mover, I'm not seeing where you're referencing.
Here.
Okay, thank you.
The cons of this one is that it is the most expensive option. So when we were on-site, we thought, okay, let's go back and look at this again to see if there are any other options to consider, or are there ways to reduce the cost of this? So we stepped all the way back and said, okay, let's look at a single-point student and visitor entrance at the existing entrance, and what does that entail? It entails rebuilding this area, the vestibule now, and potentially in putting the security officer in a small office on the opposite side of where they are now, which is here. And that's because that, that security desk is not enclosed. So the pros of this one, and not touching this area at all. The pros of this is that is the cheapest option. The cons are that it creates somewhat of a bottleneck because everybody is coming in. This is the only front entrance of the building. There's no direct visibility for the security officer. The security office is small, and it approaches upon the main office. The security office is small, and it approaches upon the main office. The alternate option of this is doing the work that we just described in this area, but creating a student entrance in this zone. So, keeping the security officer in this location, which is where a visitor would come in, and anyone who requires accessibility, and providing a student entrance on its own. The idea would be that once the bell, the first bell rings or the first class starts, these doors are closed, and anybody coming into the building goes in through the front new entrance, the renovated entrance, let's say. The pros of this are that it is slightly a reduced cost, construction cost. The cons, again, is that there's no direct visibility, so you're relying on cameras, which is what is happening now. The security office is still small, and it's a multi-point entrance, where you have students entering one spot and visitors entering another. Now, what I didn't show, and the last option, I think, is not doing anything at all, and just modifying the actual doors and the vestibule where they are to have them become accessible. Because right now, they don't meet ADA accessible standards, because of the centremolien and the door widths are not wide enough. So, there would still have to be some modifications, but theoretically, you could leave the security officer in his location where he is now. So, before I go on to what the cost implications of these are, are there any questions on the actual sketches or the diagrams?
Anybody have a question? Anybody? I guess. In this scenario here, the security officer, during entrance to the school, at the beginning of school, would stay in his office. Students would come in, entering number two?
Yes.
Do we have a second security officer assigned in the vicinity that could monitor the students coming in through that entrance, just stand there as they're coming in?
It may not be a security officer, but it might be some other personnel. Currently, we do not use the main entrance.
No, I know.
In the morning.
But if we were to go to a two entrance scenario...
Yeah, so you would have whoever's monitoring the gym side, which would be the alternate?
Yes.
Would come over and monitor there, so yes.
So, we would have someone there?
Figure it out. We'd have to staff it, but I don't believe it would add staffing at this point.
That was my question. That was my real question. So, this scenario then minimizes construction costs, correct?
Yes.
And it achieves the goal of a secure entrance. We're obviously going to put more cameras in, and we'll have people at both entrances, and we'll be ADA compliant with a secure vestibule in both locations.
Correct.
Entrance one and entrance two.
Has Altaris reviewed these different options to give us a recommendation as the security experts?
Not, not as yet.
Altaris was involved, obviously, through the initial planning process where we, you know, reviewed several different options, but not these, not the two new studies that I'm showing you.
Right, so Altaris was involved when we were doing the safety and security bond.
Right.
Right. So, the option that's in the current plan is the same option that we were putting forward with the safety and security bond.
That was like one and two that you showed?
The first two.
Right, okay.
Correct.
This option is a result of the walkthrough that we did a couple of weeks ago in talking about some possible alternatives to building a new entranceway into the middle school, high school, into the high school.
The most important components that Altaris, you know, would advocate for would be the second set of doors, and having your security person behind some protective area.
Yes.
Anybody else have another question?
Can we go back one slide? I just want to see again what it looks like when you have...
This, this one?
Well, I'm stuck a little bit about the two Xs, where there's one entrance point for students and visitors. Maybe it's one more slide back.
So, I have the building out onto the building?
Oh, I know, but in the fourth slider, the fourth option, right, we've got basically the three or four double doors, which may be able to accommodate the wave of students, you know, that are entering at arrival time, without also needing, to your point, the gym entrance.
The what?
The gym entrance, right? Right now, we're coming in through the front door, we're coming through the gym entrance. So, when you asked about staffing, Dr. Glass' response was you could first bring the gym person over, and they could watch the auditorium, I'll call it the auditorium entrance, you know, right? So, and that's, you know, three big double doors instead of two seemingly smaller double doors.
Do you want me to go back to the...
Could we go back to the latest one?
This one.
This one? That's not the gym entrance.
No. The gym entrance is off the window to, you know, where you're sitting. But the auditorium entrance is number two.
The auditorium entrance, yeah.
Right. In this options, in this, in the two, in the one person, I'm sorry, the one entryway options, two slides back, there's one entrance, it's all built out.
Correct.
And there's two double doors going into the one, sort of, you know, what's now outside, where you have a wave of 1,000 kids at, you know, 7:30 trying to get in, and then splitting up between ADA-inquired and, you know, the auditorium entrance. Here, you're going right in. I'm just trying to envision what it's going to look like, because, you know, my first reaction when you said, oh, we'll just take the guy from the gym moving over here, it's like, well, and then after, you know, six months of that, and there's still so many kids coming in, you're going to want to have someone at the gym anyway.
No, it's a huge, huge...
Yeah, you have the auditorium.
The gym entrance.
Right. With the other scenario, I don't think you did. With slide, two slides back, right? You don't have that.
Well, you don't have the, you don't have the gym entrance.
Right.
And the scenario...
But you only have two doors to accommodate 1,000 kids coming in. You don't have that.
Right. Right now, they're split up, it helps manage the traffic. This entranceway, you only have two doors, the other way you have four.
Yeah.
Three in one, right?
So, that's, in other words, it started off, I actually was concerned that it might be sort of, what's the right word? I don't want to say, you know, short-sighted. I don't know that short-sighted is the right word, but it might be, you know...
Might be creative.
Might create, you might still want the gym entrance.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. I didn't even realize we were contemplating not having the gym as an entrance, because to have...
It's a single point of entry. That's the whole idea.
I get it, but I really, I really didn't...
With two doors, you might still want the gym entrance.
I agree with you.
Is what my point is.
I agree. I think...
It's another pro for the fourth choice.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah, that's a good way to say it. Do you know the benefit of the one that we're now looking at? Another thing would be to put four doors here instead of two.
I mean, it's the first time we're seeing it, and the first time I'm seeing it, and my first reaction was, oh, I like the other way better. But the more I think about it, I actually think I like the fourth slide better. Anyway, that's, I'm just expressing. I apologize if that's...
No, that's okay. I just want to make sure that everyone under, this is the option that we said, that was settled on in the safety and security planning, and this is the one that's currently, you know, being proposed in the bond. After the discussion and walkthrough, we thought it was important to look at this again.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and just to clarify, right, the set of doors there, it's a set of double doors, right? So, it's twice the width of what we currently have.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
But the auditorium doors is triple what we have now. If you go back to the fourth slide.
Those, those wouldn't be...
Those are auditorium doors.
They're still double doors.
Oh, that's the head of the auditorium? The auditoriums, you don't see the auditorium.
You're correct. Those are the doors to the auditorium.
Those are between you.
So, those would be new doors and we'd be adding...
Yeah, we're going to use that little... Garden space type.
Right. Okay. I'm just trying to understand...
Double doors.
Yeah. I'm just trying to understand the traffic flow and, you know. Okay.
Any other questions before I go on? Everyone's clear and...
No.
Okay. Oh, you want to take the cost? So, I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
So, what we did is we costed out the multiple options. The first option is what's in the bond right now, or in the numbers right now, and then all-in cost up $1.3 million. The two options from 2019, we had numbers on them from previous areas, so we had to just escalate them and to move forward. But the one with the exterior stairs is $940,000. The one with the interior setup is $993. And then going into the two options, the new options, the one that does not have the doors in the, let's say lobby to the auditorium, is 210, the one that does not have the doors there. And the one that builds out that area to put doors going up, a new entrance to the lobby, auditorium lobby, would be $700,000. That area, that little area between the two buildings gets built out, created in stairs, so you come up a platform, you have a set of doors that are going to go in, a roof system, and then another set of doors leading into the lobby. So, those are the five, actually, the differences between the five options that were laid out.
So, if I understand that correctly, the numbers we look at for the bond are $1.3 million, and if we like the last one that we were just showing before, it's $600,000 less.
That's correct.
Okay.
I recall we were originally talking about these updates. One of the pros, or one of the aspects we discussed was the appearance, like, so it looks like one main entrance, which we don't really have right now at the high school. So, does this last option address the appearance of the entrance that sort of makes it stand out as where visitors should be coming? Because we're at, now we're adding another entry point. Will there be clarity for where the visitors are supposed to go?
So, I think that the price that's reflected probably doesn't yet address that, other than, you know, creating a very nice set of steps and new doors, but I don't believe that it addresses signage.
We didn't put that in there.
Or a canopy?
The canopy over between the doors, is it?
Okay, so that would be, I think it's...
You could put signage on the outside of all the doors relatively inexpensively.
Yeah. So, I would imagine, you know, and again, just in plan sketch form, you're not seeing it, but there would be a similar canopy that kind of, you know, yeah, identifies the new, at least, student entrance, and then we could talk about whether that extends to the visitor entrance.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can you slide back to that one more time?
So, I think what you could potentially imagine is, and I'll try to describe this, I don't have a pointer, and apparently, I don't think you're seeing my cursor, so... Where the number two is, the student entrance, or is that number one? Number two. Theoretically, there would be a canopy that comes out from that point, and then at least covers that entrance, but we could consider bringing that further to cover the entrance to the visitor entrance where the security officer is situated, to really identify the main entrance.
Could you go back a slide or two, and then we go to your question? I just want to see the other slide up. Yeah, that one's fine. Okay. Here you go.
The new security office, I understand that's being moved so that it's fully enclosed, but right now, the security officer is behind a barrier to the people that are on the outside. So, why does the security officer need to be enclosed from the inside?
I think the idea, and I think Dr. Glass mentioned this, is that the security consultants would advise that if an intruder gets in, that that security officer wants to be enclosed in a space like any other staff or student. Because right now, once anybody's in the building, they're accessible.
Isn't the security officer going to be engaging the intruder?
Well, yeah, but he, I would presume he'd be notifying the authorities and command and control, and, I mean, if anybody who watches some of these dramas on TV, someone throws a smoke bomb and their security officer is out of commission, you know?
Only if they get in.
Yeah.
In the event that you have someone in the building...
They may not engage, because that other individual may be armed, and our security, you know, they're not armed, right? So, it will depend. They may, they may be able to engage, they may not. And if there's a lockdown for any reason, everybody in that building is enclosed, you know, is ordered to lock down and to get into a safe zone. That, in many cases, would apply to the security personnel as well. But it, but in terms of someone being in the vestibule, yeah, they're protected. You know what I mean? If no one gets past that second set of doors, then everybody and all building occupants are protected, including the security guard, to your point.
Anybody else have any other questions or anything on this?
Just for clarity, in that last option...
So, in the morning, and I assume a dismissal, the student entry would be open, and that would be pretty much open for whoever's going in and out. But any, anyone with, like, a wheelchair, for instance, would have to go through entry point one, correct?
Entry point two.
Entry for students.
Is not accessible.
Correct. Right.
If someone's on crutches or any, you know, anything like that.
And having, having done a solution somewhat similar to this, SED generally will accept that if there's a sign and there's somebody, you know, present to monitor that. And it's adjacent, also because it's adjacent to the main entrance.
Okay. I think you have more to present us, correct?
Okay, one of the other items that you asked us to, had dealt with the abatement, the hazardous material abatement of the district. And your question was, after this bond, are we abatement-free, let's say, or asbestos-free? And the answer is no. We had to go back and recalculate what is not being, not being abated or removed. One of the things, remember how this process goes on identifying hazardous materials or asbestos in the schools, in that all districts have an environmental consultant that does the testing of all materials that are throughout the buildings, and develops an inhale report, which identifies the entire building and where all hazardous materials are located. We use those reports to basically come up with all our projections of where the costs are. So, that's what our numbers are based on, what is identified in the here report. If you move forward with a project, what will happen is that testing, because then they have to do specific construction testing for SED. So, all the materials in the building get retested to make sure that we are removing what is supposed to be removed. The areas that we are not addressing right now is the pipe tunnels in this number. Right now, we're looking at $1.3 million of asbestos district-wide that we're not going to be removing. That, the $1.3 million also includes some costs that deal with the replacements. So, when we have ceiling asbestos removed in this $1.3 million, we would have to put a ceiling back in, so it includes the ceiling replacements. Same thing with the floors. As we go through, if we're removing a floor to give rid of the asbestos, we factor it in a new flooring cost. So, you would have a complete number to be looking at. So, in there, so that's $1.3. We have not figured any roofing, because that's handled with the roofing, any of the window caulking, because you'll be doing that with the window replacements, and any waterproofing or anything that is in between the brick and the brick layers. So, that's where we are to basically remove asbestos that is in occupied areas throughout the district. But in that, one of the things that you should understand, or, and let me make note of, and I worked these, you know, pulled these numbers extra... and I've worked these, you know, pulled these numbers extracted out of our budgets at the same time, is that you should know how much money of this bond is actually earmarked for abatement, which is quite a bit. And I'll go down by school. In the high school, we have about 1.4 million dollars' worth of abatement needed, and that's not including the replacements, that's just straight abatement. In the middle school, we have about 682,000, and Hutch about 1.2 million, Greenville 880,000, Waverly 365,000. So we have built into the project 4.6 million dollars of abatement that is not associated, that is associated with the work we're going to be doing. With that, we know that the identified hazards in the area reports are not 100%. So that we always tack on, when we know there's this much asbestos in the school, we will tack on a 2% allowance to make sure that we cover what is not figured, which is another 1.1 million dollars built into the bond. So what I'm saying is, we have about 5.8 million dollars' worth of asbestos removal. And if you look at it, there's, on the walkthrough we did the other day, when you go into, like Anne Hutch, the entire ceiling system of the entire building is hot, so we would have to remove that and then replace it. The other thing that makes the cost increase is that we can't do asbestos while you're in school, you wouldn't want us to anyway, but we can't. It's against state regulations. And also, we have to basically follow very rigid rules from the Department of Labor about how it gets removed, how it gets protected, the testings and the cleanings beyond that. So all of that gets factored into the overall sequencing and schedule so that we can figure exactly how to get that done and put the new installations in right after we remove it. So all of that actually has a cost associated with it that is not realized until you start working. I didn't figure we touch much in any of these buildings that we don't start with an abatement. So you're, but this will go a long way to cleaning out all your buildings.
So in Lisa's first...
Side, we saw that, for lack of a better word, kicking the can down the road 10 years has essentially cost us double, right? I don't know if I'm remembering exactly, but that's sort of the moral story. We're talking about a five-plus-year project here. You know, put your forecast goggles on for a moment. I mean, if we do this, if we kick this can down the road, is it going to double up the cost? Is it going to stay relatively flat because it's just abatement? Or is it impossible to say, or...
We use economists to basically help us forecast where we're going to be for the bonds that we're working on. So on this one, everything that we factored in in the numbers for this bond, we have an escalation factor built into the project. So we are pretty confident that we can get through this bond for that value. Every year that it postpones, that number goes up, your contingencies go up. So yes, the prices aren't going down, they're continuing to go up. So right now, if the program that's been laid out, we've provided what we believe is a sufficient escalation.
No, what I'm saying is, if we choose not to add this now, and we decide to wait, you know, five or 10 years until next phase, right? Because we talked about the fact that there are other things, even with this bond, that still will need to get remedied later on.
That's correct.
Right. So if we save this for, I'm not going to call it Phase Two, because Phase Two has specific meaning with this bond, but Bond Two, let's say, in eight years, is that going to turn this into a $3 million project? Or is it like, you know, the remediation costs are the same, but the replacement costs will go up, so we'll add 30%?
It very well could. It's going to go up. It's not going to go, it's not going to go down. Yes, you're correct, in that the longer you take, and this is figured, when you figure escalation, you're figuring from the start of the project to the middle of the construction. That's where escalation goes. So a lot of your escalation is happening on the front end of the project, because by the time we get to the tail end of the project, all your numbers are locked in, so that, you know, now we're secure with where the budgets are, and escalation is factored in, you know, is no longer a major concern. Until that time, so if you push three years down, let's say, and not do this for three years, we would have to re-escalate the project based on that.
Well, by definition, it's not going to be able to be done for three years until after the other project's over, right? So you're talking about eight years.
Correct.
And there's not really any economies that we're getting by doing it now, other than that inflationary savings. Is that true?
That would be correct.
Okay. That's what I'm trying to understand. Thank you.
Okay. All the questions, Annie?
I'm just going to throw something out here and say, because I'm the one who asked about the abatement question about what remaining, what was remaining. And if we're looking at an infrastructure bond as large as it is right now, to rid ourselves with asbestos going forward, I would absolutely like to talk about adding this in, and just be done with all the ceilings, all the flooring. Granted, we'll still have asbestos caulking on windows, but when you replace windows, you replace that.
That's correct.
So your buildings will basically be clean. I mean, if I'm sitting out in the public and I'm being asked to vote on a bond for infrastructure, and it's $70 million, and you're going to say, but there's still a million and a half dollars' worth of asbestos still in the buildings, I would say, are you kidding me? You know? So, I mean, that's, that's my opinion. So I'd like to hear from other people. What do you think?
Yeah, my thought on that would be, you know, what is the useful life left on, you know, let's say it's flooring, that has asbestos tiles under the flooring? What is the useful life left on that floor? Is that something that, well, in 10 years, we're going to have to take care of that floor anyway, so we'll, obviously, it'll be abated in 10 years.
We've been doing flooring almost every summer.
Yeah, yeah, so my question would be like...
Why not do it all at once and bond it for 20 years?
Well, but then, but then the useful life on the next floor starts 10 years earlier, right? So that would be sort of my question is, is this, the idea that there is asbestos there, we don't like clearly, and it makes it more complicated when we want to do work, which I think we'll eventually have to do anyway. But my question is, if there's no safety risk, do we want to inflate the cost now, or do we want to push that to the time when we would abate it anyway, at the end of the useful life of that floor or that ceiling?
I'll give you Vito's argument on that one, and Vito's argument would be, every year, we do capital projects out of our operating tax levy, okay? And my argument has always been, if something's going to last for 20 years, it should be paid by the people over the next 20 years, not the people this year. So why not take this million dollars and bond it over 20 years and let people pay for it as they use it? Makes sense, doesn't it? Rather than putting $200,000 a year in your operating budget for the next five years, and then you're paying for it for the next five years, as opposed to the person's going to buy your house and pay for it for the next 20. That's the way I think in finance, but I, you know, this is for the board, it's not my decision. What do you guys think?
Can we get an answer on these?
Yeah, I understand that asbestos products were used heavily in the 50s and 60s, so that's what we're dealing with. So your flooring systems, your ceiling systems, the pipe installation around the piping, you've already gone past your useful life of all those systems. If you went, if you remember through the walkthrough the other day, we were looking at a lot of ceilings, and the discussions were around the cracks in some of the ceilings, and does that pose a problem? You know, the way they've been addressed, well, not addressed, but the way they've been protected doesn't pose a problem today, but I'm not saying that it's not going to in a very short time period. A crack in a ceiling indicates that something's moving. If the material is asbestos, then you're going to have asbestos in the program. Floor tile, as we discussed at the walkthrough, a lot of the rooms have another layer of flooring over top of the floor tile. When that comes up, and especially, I remember Mr. Kier was going over a lot of the carpet that was installed, that he needs to basically replace. Well, if carpet or any other flooring is glued on top of asbestos floor tile, when you go to peel that up, it moves the tile, it picks the tile up with it, which makes it a project, so it makes it a asbestos project. So to remove the carpet, to basically get to the flooring below, you have to do it as an abatement. So based on that most of the products you're looking at are 50, 60 years old or better, I would say, yes, they've lived past their useful life.
And to answer Steve's question about, you put in new flooring, when is it going to wear out? I'm going to presume you're going to put in some type of vinyl plank flooring, which is easily replaced, correct?
I think the standard right now seems to be VCT, but there are other options that are...
Whatever, but it's easily replaced on a room-by-room basis, hallway-by-horway basis.
Yeah.
You don't have to deal with asbestos contractors to replace floors, you replace them as they wear out.
I have a question. Does adding in the last layer of asbestos removal at 1.5 million change the timeline at all, since you're limited into when, or you can do it in the same summer periods?
Yeah, no, I don't believe so. We, it changes, it might change the sequencing a little about how, where we stop and start in each building, but we start anticipating what abatement has to be done so we can get that done, and where we put temporary walls up, so we can basically work at the same time. So no, if you look at the breakdown of where it comes in, it's spread out among the district, so I believe it'll be, it'll work into the overall abatement program when we get to it in each school.
So is it your recommendation that we...
Do this, and that we add this to the bond?
I don't have a recommendation. I'm here providing information only.
It sounds like it's a Pandora's box.
That if not addressed the way it should be addressed, it's just, we're just pushing something that's going to need to happen down the road at some point. Like, I just keep thinking about, we talked about this at Anne Hutch, there was, maybe it was one summer or a couple of months before school opened, there was some asbestos ceiling that fell, and that was unexpected, and it just throws the whole wrench into having schools start, or whenever that was. So, I don't know, it's almost like a situation of, what's that saying, penny wise, pound foolish, or whatever that is.
If you actually look at the numbers, the vast majority of the cost there is in ceilings. It's not in flooring. Flooring, we could abate asbestos room by room.
Correct.
But, you know, if you took all the flooring out of that number, I just did a little math in my head, you're still over a million dollars to do ceilings.
That's correct. The flooring's easier.
If you could get the florings for a couple hundred thousand dollars while you're doing it, why not just do it all at once? You know? The ceilings are the real risk.
The ceilings are the issues, yeah.
You know, if a ceiling, as you said, falls, which we've had happen...
We've had that on more than...
Could you imagine we do a bond for 70 million dollars, and then after we finish the school, a year later, a piece of ceiling falls? You know, come on. Makes no sense.
No, I agree.
Takes no sense.
At the beginning, as I recall, the beginning of work in the high school, on the high school bond, the ceiling fell in the...
In the gym, in the auditorium.
Right, so, yeah, I mean, yeah, I agree.
Makes no sense. So, I mean, what do you guys think? Are we going to include asbestos or no? Do we need, we're not voting, I'm just, any objections to including it in the bond?
I'm curious why it wasn't included in the bond. I mean, somebody made a determination that this was a lower priority than other things, right?
No, that's not exactly how, what we were doing was, we were concentrating on the infrastructure, and we were replacing the ceilings in areas that we needed to get through with piping. So if we were going to affect the ceilings by needing to put up a lot of supports, then that ceiling would have to come down anyway, because you can't put the supports through an asbestos ceiling without being asbestos contractor on the cert. So those ceilings, we took down and then replaced those ceilings to get the piping that we're in. The areas that are left are not areas that we need to get, that we can access to with piping, so they weren't included. We were trying to just address what was, in our way really, or what was required for the installations that were being proposed.
So we, everybody okay? We're all okay?
No economies, but there's risk, so...
What's that?
My first question was about economies, there's no economies, and maybe there are also economies a little bit.
I heard that, but I would think there have to be economies, because you've...
Yeah, well, if you have the contractor in to work on half the ceiling and tell them do these two other rooms, my guess is it's a lot cheaper than if you go out here later and take them back and do two rooms.
It's definitely economies, correct.
But relatively speaking, I think the economies are small, but the risk is, I agree, the risk is high. For a million dollars, and some of it's going to be sort of, if we choose to go with the other door option...
Yeah, we just said they have a million dollars on the door option.
By that decrease, the net cost is really not much to, and I think it's a big plus to be able to say to the community, part of this bond was, we're getting rid of the asbestos problem here. We're getting rid of the asbestos problem here. I think that's of value, so I, you know, I started off thinking we could...
Pay it over 20 years, instead of paying it over each year.
Well, if we went with going in the next bond, it'd still be 20 years, but start five years later. But anyway, bottom line is, I think it's the right move.
Nobody's got a problem with that? Okay, guys?
Okay, I just want to basically back up one second, in that we're not making the buildings asbestos-free this way.
We know that.
The steam tunnels will still have asbestos, we're going to close them off and just list them as, you know, a closed-off area, and we're not going to rip out good walls to basically just get, to dig behind it, to find an asbestos pipe to remove the asbestos off of it. It's not worth the money. At that point, we just identify, your inhale report would identify that this wall has asbestos behind it, so don't touch that wall, and that's all. So that everybody's aware of that.
I think everyone is crystal clear on that.
Good.
Do you have more thoughts?
All right. Keep fine tuning.
Well, I can end there. Rest of the morning's scheduled.
So we just then need a decision on the vestibule, this high school security vestibule. Which plan do you want to include in the bond, because we need to have a number for next week?
Does everyone like the last one that was proposed? Because I think that's, you want to go back on a slide or two, or? That one? That one? Does everyone like that one? We all okay with that? And we're all clear? We're not going to use the gym anymore?
That's using like the spot that's right next to Dr. Capuano's kind of area there.
Yeah, it's taking that little bit, you see where that number two is, the red number two?
Over on that side a little, yeah.
It's going to force a little area out of the admin offices, and if they need additional space, we're going to have to, you know, find that somewhere.
And then widen the already existing entranceway that's not ADA today.
Yeah, they're going to...
Right.
That's correct.
There's a little bit of reconstruction in the existing vestibule that has to happen to make that work.
Everybody's okay with this one?
What are we not getting with the...
The $200,000 one? Can we just go over what the difference was?
That would, right, you're getting the whole secondary student entrance and exit.
And the ability to sort of, sorry, to isolate.
You're getting the ability to, if you have an event here, to isolate the high school and lock that off, whereas if you go with the other, the $200,000 one, you still have to come in through the high school, and you're giving the public access to your high school to go to the theater.
So in other words, a theater, then you might use number two for families?
Yes.
Makes sense. So we're all okay with this one? Yes, yes, no objections? Okay. Sharpen those pencils and get to work.
Thank you.
Thank you both, well, three of you, thank you.
Yes, thank you. This team's been working extremely hard.
I just have a couple of comments, and then I'll conclude my report. I wanted to give you a little bit of a COVID update. Our numbers for COVID in the last week have been rising, and I'm not talking about quarantine cases, I am talking about COVID-positive cases. They have more than tripled in the last week, week and a half, and it looks, we'll have to see next, after the holiday, whether that trend continues. It's been pretty evenly distributed across all of the grade levels. In fact, and if not more heavily concentrated at the secondary level, but it's pretty evenly distributed. And quarantines have been, I think, relatively in check, they're doing pretty well, but the overall numbers between the cases and the quarantines are starting to put stress on our ability to deliver quarantine instruction, whether it be through a streaming model, or whether it be through providing, as we're doing at the elementary with a, with a... doing at the elementary with a dedicated teacher. So, I'm asking everybody to, who may be listening to this, to do your very, very best to be, to keep your mitigation strategies up, so that we can get, see these numbers come back down. It's not just in our school. Every school district I spoke with in this Lower Hudson area, who was on a Zoom call this week, is experiencing something similar. I think, you know, this is also seen across Westchester County, where the numbers have jumped in the last week and a half from about 1,100 active cases to, I think around 1,900 active cases, if my memory serves me correctly. So, hospitalizations fortunately, fortunately have not, have not risen in the county, but the number of cases has. So, the more we can do to keep ourselves, you know, from bringing, you know, COVID into our schools, we need to do that. So, as a result, we are going to, we are going to be posting, and have posted, for an additional teacher at the elementary level, because we don't want to be at risk of not being able to deliver instruction to those who are quarantined. As you recall, we budgeted for two positions plus in our federal funding, and so we want to go ahead and post and see who might be available. And as, as we get into the post-Thanksgiving-holiday area, we should start seeing some applications. At the same time, we can watch our numbers. But I am of the opinion, as is our team, that it's better to have more support than less. And we've had rave reviews about the kind of instruction our students have been having when they're on quarantine. I've had some really nice emails about the work that's been done there, and I very much appreciate our teacher who's providing that. At the same time, if that teacher becomes spread so thin, we're going to have, you know, not, not the same experience for our students, and so having more instruction is, is a help. So, we're going to take a step in that direction, and if the cases continue to rise, and if we find a good candidate, we could be bringing you another candidate to add at a future board meeting. I also wanted to make everybody aware that we are looking at trying to implement something called Test to Stay. Test to Stay is a program that has now been authorized by the Health Department here in Westchester. If a school wants to do this on their own, they can. It allows a student who's been in close proximity to a COVID-positive case, rather than being quarantined, to come to school and to be tested every day with a rapid test, and if they test negative, they can stay in school. If they test positive, they go home. There are some limitations to it. The student has to be tested outside of the school day in the morning, before they come into the building. The student cannot ride the bus. The student cannot participate in extracurriculars, but it does keep the student engaged in academics at school. And therefore, we have to be able to set up some sort of a central testing site that families would have to drive their children to before the start of school. We would administer the test. The test would take about 15 minutes. They'd have to wait in their car somewhere, and then when the test result came, we'd have to, we could provide that negative result, and the student could then go to school. We are having, we are hearing that it has been very difficult to obtain rapid tests. We no longer have any rapid tests that are still good. They've expired, the ones that we got from the county. The county is looking to see if they can provide more tests, but it's not clear that they will be able to. We do have to bear that cost ourselves, and responsibility to find those tests is ours. And so, we are looking for suppliers for those tests, but my understanding is the demand is through the roof right now. So, if we can get the tests, and we can get the logistics in place, we're going to see what we can do with Test to Stay, and that will help keep more kids in school, even, even if our numbers are rising a little bit. So, that's, that's the majority of the news I had on the COVID front. I also wanted to address a question that came at the public comment at our last meeting, wondering whether anything had been done about some of the incidents that were reported by some of the students who had come to public comment and reported some bullying-type incidents. And yes, those incidents have been dealt with and taken care of. All of the ones that we are aware of, we have taken care of and acted upon, and it's important that everybody understands that we have zero tolerance for any kind of incidence of bias, or hate, or bullying, and we act swiftly according to our code of conduct to make sure that everybody understands that is not acceptable in our schools. At the same time, as you saw in the presentation from Ann Hutch, we're always teaching pro-social behavior, and we are encouraging people to treat each other with kindness and respect and according to the values that we uphold as a school and as a community. And so, I just wanted to make clear that, yes, we are, we have looked into those event, those reported events. Just want to preview for you that on December 14th, we will be having a report from Eastchester High School, similar to the one from Ann Hutch. We are going to also give you a short presentation on how we do hiring, what our hiring practice is, here across the district for certified staff. We, on January 11th, will be giving you our DEI report. We have one more DEI meeting left. We had a fantastic meeting recently. We made a lot of good progress. We're finalizing the recommendations, and they will be coming to the public and to this board on the 11th of January, at the, at a meeting, at this meeting, a board meeting, and we'll release those to everyone, and I think you'll be very, very pleased with those. You'll also have a report on our special ed programming here in the district on that night. And then, January 25th, we, you will have our strategic plan delivered to you. So, a lot of good things coming, and I just want to take a moment to thank everyone for everything they're doing in this district. We have amazing people here, and we have amazing support here in our community, and our staff is incredible. They've done an amazing job in this moving, in helping our students make real progress this year, emotionally and academically, and I'm very grateful, I'm very thankful for them, and I'm very thankful for our families and our PTA, PTA groups, and all of those who provide support to us. We couldn't do it without you. I hope everyone has a tremendous, relaxing, and wonderful Thanksgiving holiday season.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Steve? So, I've got a question about the Test to Stay. Is there any, within the authorization, is there any allowance for, if we were able to give students a PCR or rapid PCR test, to where they, we could use that and not test, rather than every day, have that PCR result and let them stay in school? And if so, can we utilize the rapid PCR relationship that we have right now?
I'm being told that we, we must test every day, regardless of whether it's a PCR or not, and the PCR is so much more expensive, as we know, that it would be prohibitive. Yeah. Good question, though. It would, I just think it's the frequency, and probably not related to the accuracy of the test, but to the progression of a virus within an individual, depending on when the incubation period started, if you didn't know about it. That's, that's my suspicion, but yes, good question. Don't think they'll let us do it.
Good. Just, you mentioned about bringing on a second teacher to support all the team students. If it takes some time to get there, do we have, you know, I asked you an email about the agenda today, about, you know, we have some, some other teachers who are able to fill in for a sub, or for lack of a better word, until we're able to hire. Is that something we're looking at for this position also, maybe at the elementary, where elementary teachers could, you know, help fill in gaps in the interim?
Well, we have, when we get into a very tight situation, as we did once this year, our teachers certainly, you know, have stepped up for a small stipend, right, that we have in our contract to provide tutoring. It's sort of a, sort of a, after, sort of after-school support portion. It's difficult to do at scale, because, but yes, it could supplement if we got into a bind, but long-term, it-
Well, I know it has to, but for a variety of reasons, it has to be a temporary thing, but it sounds like we may have a period where we're getting hit.
Yes.
It's been in the papers, right? There's 30% to New York State, or 28% increase to New York State.
Yes.
You know, so we're, you know, if we're seeing, and it takes time to bring someone in-
Yes.
You know, that may be an opportunity to, to close a gap for a temporary period.
Our teachers have been amazing about being willing to step up and do that, and I know that they would continue to do that as well, if, in a pinch.
I know our teachers are fabulous, and I'm glad, that's why I was suggesting we can seek their assistance if they're willing to help.
Yes.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, we're ready? Good. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, so does anybody have anything they want removed from that? Yes, no? Okay. Jackie, would you like to move the consent agenda, which would be items, it would be our personnel agenda, approval of the minutes, personnel agenda, committee on special, preschool, stipulation of settlement, accepting the treasurer's report, special education-related services contract, and that's it. So, you want to move that?
We have resolved that the Board of Education approved the consent agenda, which includes the following: eight, approval of minutes; nine, personnel agenda; ten, committee on preschool, special education, special education recommendations; eleven, business office recommendations; twelve, other business items, as attached.
Okay. Krista, you want to second that?
Yes.
I do. All in favor? Okay, that's everybody. Good. You have much time, we save. Next. I'm going to switch future meeting dates later, which is really next, but we'll go to comments from the public now. So, anybody have any comments they'd like to come up? Please see Mr. Blum and sign in, and remember, we have a three-minute limit. Just identify who you are and where you live.
Can I start?
Yes.
Good evening, Colin Keegan.
And you can take your mask off while you're speaking, as long as you maintain distance.
All right, thank you very much. Good evening, Colin Keegan, I'm 27, Grand Boulevard. On the surface, who wouldn't be for diversity, equity, and inclusion? But as the saying goes, the devil's in the details. So, I picked up the 64-page New York State Culturally Responsive Education Framework to have a closer look. I started with its expert committee, folks like David Kirkland, Gloria Latson-Billings, Django Paris, and all the rest. To a person, all of these committee members hail exclusively from very liberal academic institutions. There isn't a single moderate, much less a conservative academic, that contributed to this framework. How is that diverse or inclusive? The answer is, of course, it isn't. It's classic Orwellian doublespeak. It's a pedagogy developed by like-minded academics and educators that profess a fervent belief in the virtues of the oppressed versus oppressor narrative. It's fundamentally a Marxist doctrine, dressed up in social niceties, a proverbial wolf in sheep's clothing. Strung throughout the education framework is the insistence that our children must become agents of change. In other words, they must take what they learn in the classroom and convert the masses, just like a religious fundamentalist. For those of you unfamiliar with how similar re-education programs went in the 20th century, you need only do a quick Google search. They resulted in some of the worst atrocities in history. Now, you might think I'm taking this a bit too far, but consider this. Django Paris, a member of the committee, refers to Paulo Freire, a Brazilian Marxist revolutionary, as one of his primary influences. According to his Wikipedia entry, Freire considered the Chinese Cultural Revolution "an exemplar of his notion of cultural action" and praised Mao Zedong's innovations. It is estimated that millions perished in the violence of the Cultural Revolution, along with the imprisonment of huge numbers of people, economic and social chaos, and the destruction of China's traditional cultural heritage. Talk about being on the wrong side of history. Similarly, David Kirkland, the lead director of this framework, points to one of his primary influences as a French colonial Marxist revolutionary with similar sentiments. Board members, you can't take fruit from a poisonous, from a poisonous tree and expect it to be nourishing for our children. This pedagogy, Dr. Glass, is not a way of bringing people together. It's a way of tearing them apart. It is yet another dagger pointed at the soul of the American body politic, and it is beyond comprehension that so-called people of higher education would ever entertain the idea of foisting these pernicious doctrines on our children in the name of unity. It is clear from the lessons of the 20th century that Marxist ideology only serves to undermine and destroy society and crush the human spirit in the process, or at the behest of an emerging totalitarian state. There is no place for it in our classrooms. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I just want to tell the gentleman to put his mask back on, that's all. Sir? Got a, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Suzanne Johnson, 14, Industry Place. Many in the community have growing concerns of transparency in this district. Minor children are required to attend school 35 hours a week. Parents want access to teaching materials and want to have parental observation. Parents and taxpayers have the right to see what is going on in the classroom. For months, we have been bringing up legitimate concerns at these board meetings, and the lack of answers is unacceptable. Last month, the vice president of this board emailed me saying, "I might recommend that email is a better venue for dialogue than board meeting comments." I hope you can understand that even via email, we may not always be able to comply with your requests or provide answers that meet your satisfaction. This kind of overt intimidation is not going to work. I and every other parent, community member, and taxpayer will continue to assert our First Amendment right to speak at these meetings. This board just announced a $74 million bond to repair schools. Should taxpayers have to foot the bill without the confidence that our schools are on the right track? They're not on the right track. There is a sense of racializing and sexualizing our children in the classrooms. I presented concrete evidence to this fact in my meeting with Mr. Nguyen a week ago. Here are a few highlights. A recent eighth-grade class assignment cited divisive ideas such as white middle-class bigotry and the burden of brown skin in a white school. Gender fluidity and anti-Christian sentiments were cited in a high school assignment of stick stones in that word. For anyone paying attention, our middle schoolers, 10 to 14, are subjected to reading books that include masturbation, sexual acts, kidnapping, violence, emotional abuse, child abuse, trafficking, abandonment, self-harm, gender confusion. While we continue to pour money in the expansion of social-emotional learning, a program that circumvents parental rights, and a library system that provides books that introduce the most vile of subjects, I want to know, where are the adults guarding the children? Who are protecting them for 35 hours a week? This problem is not new, but it's growing terribly worse. We demand transparency, and we will not stop until we get it. Thank you for your time.
Tiorgashi, Eastchester School resident, father of two boys, aged eight and five. I'm going to make a case against COVID vaccine mandates, especially for children, by citing different sources from FDA, NIH, Reuters, Lancet, and UK Health government websites. Do the children need the COVID shot? Around 300 children died with COVID in the past 12 months, with some of those likely to be flu deaths, since there were no diagnosed flu deaths in the same period. In the year prior to COVID, around 650 children died from flu. If the COVID risk for children is less than flu, then why is FDA approving shots for children? Are COVID shots safe? For the clinical trial of 16 and older, Pfizer states that up to March 2021, there were a total of 38 deaths, 21 in the vaccine group and 17 in the placebo group. These are all cause deaths, including COVID. An equal number of participants. There are more deaths in the COVID vaccine group. This refutes the claim that shots save lives. FDA claims it will take 55 years to go over Pfizer's 329,000-page vaccine- FDA claims it will take 55 years to go over Pfizer's 329,000-page vaccine data document to review for redaction before releasing to the public, but they only had three months to do the initial review of the same document before approving Pfizer's vaccine in August. Three months the first time, 55 years the second time. Obviously, they never reviewed the document in the first place. They just took Pfizer's word that the benefits outweigh the risks. Has the FDA inspected vials using microscopic analysis to confirm ingredients reported by Pfizer? There has been no such declaration from FDA. What is the under-reporting factor for VAERS? A Harvard study found that less than 1% of vaccine adverse events are reported. If the 18,000 deaths reported in VAERS do not originate from shots, then why 85% of those deaths have occurred within the first two weeks of getting the shot? These deaths are never attributed to vaccines. They could be for COVID, and since they fall within two weeks of the shot, they're definitely not attributed to vaccines. There were incentives of tens of thousands of dollars to hospitals diagnose and list cause of death as COVID. Why haven't there been any autopsies to find the real cause of these deaths? Are the shots effective? We regularly hear the shots are 95 to 100% effective in death reduction. Data from UK Health Service shows that in an age group of 40 and up, there's more vax than non-vax deaths, starting at 52% and gradual increases so that in the last age group, greater than 79 years old, 90% of deaths are vaccinated. A Harvard study published in NIH analyzing US counties and 68 foreign countries found that there's no relationship between vaccinated population and new COVID cases. In fact, they find that the more vaccinated US counties and foreign countries are, the more COVID cases. New research published in Lesion found that vaccinated are just as likely to spread the virus in the household as the unvaccinated. And last, in a leaked Pfizer contract with a foreign country, Pfizer states that long-term effects and efficacy of the vaccine are not known. In case of any lawsuits, the government of the country must protect Pfizer, and if they fail to do so, Pfizer will seize the country's assets to cover the lawsuit expenses. Safe, effective, seizing country assets? What is the percentage of Pfizer, Moderna, J&amp;J, CDC, and FDA employees that's vaccinated? They're rarely asked, and when they are, they respond with, "We don't know the number." Doctors follow CDC guidance when they recommend the shots. CDC and FDA are financially influenced by Big Pharma. They take Pfizer's word. There is no other independent analysis to verify Pfizer's claim. We are to blindly trust Pfizer when they say that benefits outweigh the risks for experimental shots, whose long-term safety is unknown and whose adverse events are being kept hidden. Further, they have full immunity in case shots cause serious injuries or deaths. The victims will incur all losses. COVID shots do not stop prevention or transmission.
You're a little over. If you could wrap it up?
Yeah, last sentence. Do not stop prevention or transmission. At best, immunity is short-lived and very independent. There is no long-lasting benefit, but there can be harm by taking the shot. Given that there is early treatment, COVID shots are not needed either. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Stay close to the mic because he was a little further away.
Okay, so my name is Sophia McGann, and I live on 184 Dante Avenue. Last time, you heard a lot of students speak about a specific incident of Rachel Slurs being thrown around and sung at school sanctioned events. And I wanted to just first start off with thank you to Dr. Glass and the administration for taking our words so seriously and actually making disciplinary action on those words that we have seen. So it's very important for us and students seeing that you are taking us seriously, and that was very nice to see. Also, I do believe that though disciplinary action is important, the true need to make change happens in our curriculum. The first time I have ever read a book written by a person of color was this year in my 12th grade year. We're seeing constantly that our students are not getting the education that is well-rounded as it has been promised. The only time race has even been considered in a substantial piece of literature in my school career at Eastchester has been through To Kill a Mockingbird. And as we see now, that's often hailed as a book of a white savior complex that isn't conducive of the true Black American experience. We see often that teachers are taking the time to, on their own account, incorporate books of race and topics of different perspectives on their own time and adding it beyond the curriculum, yet our curriculum itself doesn't support the use of these books. I feel, as a student, I don't know how I can step into the real world full of diverse perspectives if I only know the history and the understanding of America from the perspective of white authors. A lot of the time, we're seeing that our curriculum often leaves gaps and holes that have our students unable to understand why so many societal issues are going on within America, and they're unable to talk and understand about why these problems are happening. So though it's only myself and one other student talking tonight, we do believe that there are many issues we need to be grasping upon, whether it be sexual identity, understanding of gender expression, even voting rights and civic involvement. I believe that we're leaving out a very vital portion of our students' curriculum, and I think it's something to be considered in the future when curriculum is up for debate, because this isn't something that I expect to be changed within a month, of course. So thank you, and I hope I did take your consideration of talking and addressing without reading off my phone, so I just wanted to say that. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Madison Diaz, and I am a senior at Eastchester High School. I would like to talk about the addition of LGBTQ+ history in our curriculum. More and more students are coming into the classroom having realized their true sexuality and their true gender, and it's seemingly dismissed in our curriculum. In history, we learn about our country's past, its beginning. In language classes, we get to learn about different cultures, but never has gender or sexuality beyond the history of gender inequality been discussed. And LGBTQ+ history is a huge part of our history. We talk about women's rights movement, the civil rights movement, and I could rattle off facts about both, but ask me about the gay rights movement, and I couldn't tell you a thing. We talk about the slave trade. We talk about the horrible conditions that slaves faced. We talk about how Christopher Columbus abused, murdered, and raped Native Americans. We talk about the Holocaust. We watch horrifying and sad documentaries showing pictures of the skeletal bodies of Jews in concentration camps. These are hard topics. Some of them are even found controversial, but these are all facts, taught as a part of our history. It's time to start incorporating some facts about LGBTQ+ history. I want to learn that in 1924, the first gay rights organization was founded by Henry Gerber in Chicago, that a 1962 gay march held in front of Independence Hall in Philadelphia has been marked as the beginning of the modern gay rights movement. California, New Jersey, Colorado, and Oregon have all passed LGBTQ+ inclusive curriculum legislation, and while New York has not brought the same change yet, I hope we will follow shortly. Even without the state, we can still make the change, have a more inclusive curriculum. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Weisman. I'm a resident on Garth Road, and I am the grandmother of a student in Eastchester. I'm concerned about DEI and vaccination of children for COVID. In reading about DEI, it's yet another device to further divide and turn people against each other. We've long been divided by race, religion, and color, more recently by gender identification, and now by vaccination status. The DEI literature talks about checking your biases and your privilege, confessing and admitting to being either oppressed or an oppressor, but it looks more like an axe to wield to effect societal change. In Mao's Cultural Revolution, people from all walks of life had to declare their wrong think, frequently in front of a mob, apologize for who they were, what they did, and where they came from, and if it wasn't good enough, they were killed for simply being part of a perceived privileged group. Wouldn't our children be better served by learning the qualities that make for a good person: honesty, integrity, respect, responsibility, patience? Or what about teaching the golden rule: treat others as you would have them treat you? Discrimination is alive and well. Simply look at what's happening to the unvaccinated who come in all colors, genders, and religions. I will be unemployed as of next week for refusing to be vaccinated, 27 years with the same organization. We are increasingly marginalized, discriminated against, and persecuted with the full approval of government, schools, the media, and work. When was the last time you can remember people being denied entry into society, into restaurants, schools, houses of worship, or the workplace, or denied medical procedures? Is this the America you want for our children? Lastly, I want to address the vaccination of children for COVID. Remember when Fauci, Gates, Trump, and Biden said, "Get the shot. It's the only way to get back to normal. Get the shot, and you won't get COVID, and you can take off your masks." Now we're hearing is if enough kids get the shot, they can take off their masks, but not the unvaccinated kids. Isn't this what they promised the grown-ups? And look around, you're all wearing masks. Remember when the vaccine was nearly 100% effective? Safe, really? Anyone look at the CDC's vaccine adverse events reporting system? Over 18,000 people have died, and countless more suffered neurological, heart, and thrombotic injuries. Many effective? That's a joke. You can still get and transmit COVID, and now you need a booster. They want this failing vaccine with no long-term safety studies for our children. So, members of the school board, can our kids just decouple from these imposed agendas and focus on teaching kids the basics: reading, writing, and arithmetic? And can we return to normal and give our children the skills they need to succeed in life? Thank you.
My name is Michelle Simon-Kissel, 15 Interlake and Drive, Eastchester. I am a resident of Eastchester and a former member of this Board of Education, and I'm joined tonight by other former members of this Board of Education. We're sitting in the audience Liz Kangrow, Mary Morton, Dave Carfora, and Willa Brody, who couldn't attend tonight but is here in spirit. I'd like to just start by saying how sorry we were to hear about Christian Gorecki. Our children, who are now out of the school district, had him. He was a kind, smart, and dedicated teacher, and our hearts go out to his family and to the whole Eastchester community. But we're here tonight to express our support for the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Initiative. We're offering our views from two different perspectives. One, as I said before, we're all former board members who have served on the Eastchester Board of Education, and secondly, we're all parents whose children have gone through and graduated from the Eastchester schools. Eastchester is a special community, a small town with its own unique personality. We support each other. We look out for each other's children. We look out for our neighbors. The objective of DEI, this statewide initiative, is to make sure that the same supportive, affirming, and welcoming environment is also present in our school community. As parents, we want our children to be critical and analytical thinkers, to feel comfortable expressing their opinions, to understand and learn from the history of our country, to be empathetic and accepting of people who may have different views, or backgrounds, or aspirations. We want our children to be able to go out into the world and be able to successfully interact with all types of people, regardless of their race, religion, sexual orientation, or political views. You have heard already from, I thought, incredibly articulate students, not just tonight, but on previous evenings. Our own children are grown, they're out in the world, but they have all talked to us about how they would have benefited from this kind of initiative. During their time in the Eastchester School District, they were subjected to insensitive remarks and dislike about people who were different. As former board members, we know that there are many times when, as a board, you don't agree, but you express your views, you listen to each other, you compare it to issues you've previously thought about and resolved, and you ultimately come to a decision where you all can agree that your decision is best for all of the children of Eastchester. Diversity, inclusion, and equity is about supporting and learning from each other. It's about recognizing that we may view the world differently, that there may be gaps in our understanding in what we've learned, that there may... But that our goal is to make sure that our children are self-confident, valued, appreciated, and able to successfully navigate our increasingly complicated world. Thank you.
My name is Crystal Johnson-Jones. I live at 230 Park Drive. I'm here to address the board's lack of empathy at the previous board meeting in October. My daughter, Adriana Jones, and other students addressed the board regarding the inequitable treatment that exists in Eastchester School District. After the student speeches, the board dismissed the experienced testimonies of the discrimination that students have and continue to experience and/or witness on a frequent basis. Only one board member acknowledged what was said by the students and expressed that something needs to be done. I found the board's curt, nonchalant, and unexcused response to the students' testimonies of their experiences and discrimination, which made and continue to make them feel inferior to the human race, to be un-American. How much longer must students feel disparity? As administrators of education in Eastchester, it is expected that you represent and continue to inspire the American dream. I quote from the Pledge of Allegiance and the American Constitution, "Justice and liberty for all." You are pledging this, but you are doing just the opposite. The board, the community, personnel, and all students inclusive needs diversity, equality, and inclusion training classes immediately. Positive, true, and humane American progress is needed, and we need it now. Like my daughter said, enough is enough. No student should feel discriminated against because of their race, ethnicity, and/or sexuality. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to just thank Dr. Glass for letting the community know that bullying will not be tolerated and that things have been done for incidents that just happened recently, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jan Harrison. I live at 90 Park Drive. To all Eastchester residents, as concerned citizens of Eastchester, New York, we have decided to start a grassroots effort to save Eastchester from the infiltration of outside groups who are trying to influence our town, government, and schools. That is a direct quote from a local Facebook group called Save Eastchester. They ironically are also the same group that asked residents from Yonkers to show up at our last board meeting. Let's free our kids from mask mandates and more COVID restrictions. DEI has to be eradicated. Again, another quote from this group. There are members here of this group. There are board members who have relationships with people that are in that group. The town supervisor is in that group. While this group isn't large yet, based on its post, it is politically aligned with many of the other efforts that are going across this country. Those efforts range from creating chaos in board meetings to not obeying mask mandates and advocating that books dealing with diverse issues, including those regarding race, gender, and sexuality, be banned. If these people and their supporters get away, we will not address the inequities in our curriculum and school system. Addressing issues surrounding the need for diversity, equity, and inclusion helps our country.
country, this great country, by preparing all of our children for their future. Every child should have the freedom to pursue their dreams, no matter their color, or background, or religion. To do anything less, in my opinion, is to be un-American. The best part of what it means to be American is our courage to change. Sometimes it takes time, even generations, because change can be hard. And for too long, we have chosen to ignore our history, a history that encompasses the good, the bad, and the ugly. It is time to become our best selves together. This isn't about shaming anyone, or any group, or white people. It's about understanding where we have come from and how we grow as a nation, how we honor all of those that have contributed to America. It is about understanding that we must change to move forward for all of our children. The other choice is to be small, to be afraid of the light, to want to go backward, and to believe the fallacy that inclusive education corrupts. This board is charged with caring for all of our children. And I hope you will not forget that.
Nina McAdoo, 44 Interlakeen Drive. Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? Closer? Hello? I'm too short. So I really wasn't prepared to say anything this evening, but I'm so struck by the DEI conversation, I just wanted to make a few remarks. DEI is not just initials, right? They're real words that we need to think about: diversity, equity, and inclusion. And what I want to express here, and I think many who are not here, and as vocal this evening might agree, that, you know, I support the work of the DEI Task Force. I don't know yet whether I support the recommendations, because I haven't seen them, and neither has anyone else. And so I would say to the community, I think we need to have a little more patience and faith in our fellow citizens, and see what they come up with, because they do seem to be a cross-section of the community that's thinking about these issues very carefully. And as Dr. Glass has said in the past, trying to come up with recommendations that they think are suitable for Eastchester. So I'd be very surprised if they come up with some of the so-called woke elements that people might be reading about as happening in private schools in New York City, having white children apologize for their so-called white privilege. I'd be surprised if that's what they come up with. And if they do, let's just have a conversation about it as a community and decide calmly and respectfully what's best for us. So that's what I would ask. And I reflect upon, my son is a senior this year. He was on the league championship soccer team at the high school, very proud of him. And I'm also proud of how he and all his friends are not afraid of these issues. So we shouldn't be either. They're a real rainbow coalition on the field. They would die for each other out there, regardless of color, ethnicity, background, anything. They work together, they bring their whole selves to the team. And that's how every student in Eastchester should feel, that they could bring their whole self to the school without fear. So thank you for listening.
Hey, Adam Weissman, Garth Road. I think when it comes to diversity, equity, and inclusion, I don't think there's a single person in this room that is against that. But I think it might be helpful to explain to some of the people, or to maybe enlighten everyone why everyone hates it. Or maybe not everybody hates it, not diversity, equity, and inclusion, but DEI and the people that are pushing it. The way that this is being presented, right, is that, you know, this is like, oh, this is this problem. But if you think about what's going on in the world today, right, with all the mandates, people losing their jobs, 30,000 medical workers, right, that are going to be out of work because they don't want the vaccine, we are facing probably the most momentous discrimination of our lifetimes right now, not just in America, in the entire world. If anybody pays attention to what's happening in Australia, you can't leave your house if you're not vaccinated. You can't get paid if you're not vaccinated in Italy, right? So when we talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion, it seems very, very insincere when we're like, oh, well, we're just going to follow the guidelines, we're just going to follow the science, or whatever. The same science that I think one of the other speakers pointed out seems to be fundamentally flawed in some way. So I think while everyone is for diversity, equity, and inclusion, the people that are like making speeches come in here every month, or whatever it is, it just seems not really honest, not really truthful, when you consider what's going on in society at large. I don't know if anybody knows, but Shavona Newsom, the co-founder of Black Lives Matter in Greater New York, talked about how racist the vaccine mandates were in New York City. Also, the mayor of Boston, also African-American, talked about that she doesn't want to deal with "show me your papers," because that's sort of where we're heading. So unless like the people that are for diversity, equity, and inclusion can sort of speak to this idea of creating a two-class society, I think it's very hard for people to take them seriously. And if they want people to take them more seriously, and be, and really get on board with the idea of diversity, equity, and inclusion, right, because everyone's on board with that already, but it just doesn't seem very sincere, if that makes sense. I think even Abraham X. Kendi had a great quote where he said that people in America, I think they tend to judge people based on their beliefs as opposed to based on policy. And it should really be on policy. But here we have everybody judging each other on beliefs. I think that's a little bit upsetting. So for the people that are for DEI, I would ask you to, maybe you could speak to how you feel about people losing their jobs. Because if you don't talk about people losing their jobs or being excluded from society, many of them African-American in New York City, which is a atrocity, you should be ashamed of yourselves, thinking that that's okay, as long as you come in here and talk about, oh, but, you know, we're going to have DEI, while real people are going to be out of work, and all that other stuff. It just seems very fake. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Amuktha, but I'm going to be speaking tonight on behalf of Kush Budalani. She's a student that's come to pass board meetings and spoke. She wanted to speak tonight, but she couldn't, so I'm just reading her speech. Hello. In past meetings, I've spoken in depth about the importance of an inclusive curriculum, but today I'd like to add on. We have seen time and time again how underprepared our, how underprepared students our age are for a life of voting and potential civic engagement. Just being here, speaking to you all at these meetings required some groundwork to be done in order to understand how the process of engagement works at this level of the system. However, several students in their senior year are yet to know how they can contribute in their communities. Civic education should not be tackled at the end of high school, but approached from a very young age. We all know that government and community engagement is complex, and I'm hoping that we can all agree that getting involved is critical. Local, county, state, and national civics can impact day-to-day life for all members of the community. Thus, students should not be left in the dark when they turn 18. Instead of the message of government participation being only relevant in senior year of high school, a more practical civics education should be ingrained in school from middle school onwards, ensuring that students graduate with civics as an essential skill. According to the Educate America Act, students should leave grades four, eight, and 12 having demonstrated competency over challenging subject matter, including civics and government, so that they may be prepared for responsible citizenship. Currently, according to the NAEP Civics Assessment, also known as the Civics Report for the Nation, students are not scoring at proficient levels in the area of civics. Research has consistently demonstrated the positive effects of students participating in civics in and out of the classroom. This includes everything from student government, to community service, to attending meetings such as this one. If students are expected to be vital parts of the government, which in our democracy they are, they must develop certain skills. This includes intellectual participatory and critical thinking skills. Our education should include the major tasks of providing students with civic knowledge, developing their civic skills, and fostering them to engage, to become engaging citizens in a constitutional democracy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Borg, how you doing? Can you hear me? Chris Johnson, 14 and it's free. I know I'm the last one here. First, is the air conditioning on in this room? Because it's freezing in here, and it's like 30 degrees outside. Anyone know? It doesn't make sense to me. Couple of short things. I'll be real quick here. First, the same government that told us that it's okay to put asbestos in schools and in our homes are the ones telling us that masks keep you safe, and that vaccines are safe. So I'm still recommend personal choice in getting rid of the mandate. Second, with the bond, that's going to be a really heavy lift, Borg. Seventy million dollars, have you seen inflation? The cost of living is going up. You're going to ask the town to pay 70 million dollars. I recommend getting rid of the nice-to-haves and only looking at critical items like the electrical, maybe the heating system, et cetera. And you know, by the way, copper's up like 50% from a year ago. That's all your electrical lines. So something to think about. That's a heavy lift. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, looks like I'm going to do last call. All right, nobody? Fine. Okay, thank you all for your comments. Everybody who commented wanted wish Happy Thanksgiving. And now we are up to comments from the Board of Education. So would anyone like to?
Future meeting dates?
I skipped that. You're right. Thank you. Future meeting dates are on our agenda. Our next meeting is Tuesday, December 14, and then we will not meet again until January 11. So, and I'm not going to read all the rest after that. So now we'll do comments from the board. Anybody have any comments they'd like to, or any questions, anything they'd like to talk about? Yes, no?
Since it was brought up, I'm just...
Cliff is right, you look cold.
I've been cold since I walked in. Since it was directed via public comment, I will just point out that it was not my intent to try and stifle anyone from their right to free speech or to speak at a board meeting. However, the policy of this board continues to be, and has been for as long as I've been a member, that we don't directly dialogue with people who come to present comments at the meeting, unless it's a short-answer type of thing, and we can answer quickly. And if you're looking for a productive dialogue, and I thought I had a very productive dialogue via email with Ms. Johnson, you know, if that's what you're looking for, that's the better way to approach the problem. So that's all I'll say. We have the BOE mailbox. We welcome people to provide comments to it. It is read by board members, it is distributed to board members, and, you know, if you'd rather come and speak at the public meeting and have it, you know, something we address at a future meeting, certainly that's acceptable, too.
Thanks for that clarification. Anybody else? Any comments? No? No? John?
I note that we are working on an advocacy letter regarding mandates, and I was hoping we could just, you know, make sure we're all on the same page on that, and then hopefully we could, you know, get our resolution maybe at next meeting, and we wouldn't have to talk about it again.
Sure. Doc, you want to handle that one?
Already working on the draft.
Okay. Draft is going to be coming out, it's going to be shared with the board, and then we'll have, all of us have input into it at that point. We're going to, why don't you just kind of summarize what we're talking about putting in there?
The draft thus far really is talking about, you know, advocating personal choice with regard to vaccines. That is the thrust of it. Also, looking at thresholds, asking the state to give us thresholds for when, you know, we would be able to have, you know, masks removed, and so if you could get to a certain rate of infection low, right, through whatever means, which could include people maybe choosing vaccines, or whether you could, some other approaches have involved looking at certain vaccination thresholds voluntary, that, you know, you might be able to have some of the restrictions lifted for, you know, in school. For example, currently, students grade, who are eligible for vaccines, if they happen to be in proximity to someone, they all have to wear masks, but if they happen to be in proximity to someone who's COVID-positive, they don't have to quarantine. Adults do, but the students don't, right? So there are some things that were helpful there. So those were the two major things, really, asking for some metrics, right, from the state, and then kind of restating the fact that this would be an individual choice with regard to, you know, receiving a vaccine.
Can I just say one thing from the [inaudible]?
Comments from the public are over.
This one from Gilke.
Hang on a second. Hang on.
I have.
Excuse me.
I see COVID, I see COVID patients.
Excuse me.
Many of them are double-vaccinated. I have no natural immunity patients coming in. I just wanted to throw that out there, because there's so much [inaudible] vaccinated. A lot of patients who are committed to our practice are double-vaccinated.
I don't know what that was about.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't know where it might come up in the letter, but, you know, I have seen other letters, you know, people asking for removal of the mask restriction only for vaccinated people. I would hope that we would emphasize that any kind of relaxation would be, you know, without discriminating against people based on vaccine status, whether it's masks, or, you know, what we're seeing now kind of with the quarantines, you know, I think that should be something we should emphasize. I don't know if anybody has a different opinion.
Well, I thought I understood you to say that you are asking for metrics, like what would be the levels of, and I don't know, certain metrics that the state would provide to let districts know? Is that what you're advocating for when masks could be removed?
Correct.
Are these, I know that you meet with the superintendents in Lower Hudson Valley every week. Is this something that is in line with what other districts are doing at this point?
Yes, and the two components to the Lower Hudson letter that we wrote are very similar. The first one is test to stay, that was the one, right? So, which we have now. And then the second component was, their recommendation was if you reach an 80% vaccination threshold, that you'd be able to remove masks. And so, you know, I don't know that I would get that specific, what I would put in there might be a little, you know, it might not be within a certain percentage of vaccine threshold, but just asking them for some metrics that they think would make some sense. And I think the one difference that I've been asked to kind of consider by several board members, and I appreciate, you know, Joan asking for more discussion, because it just helps me write the letter more, you know, to reflect your preferences, the one difference here that wouldn't be in the Lower Hudson letter would be this notion of, you know, of a mandate, and, you know, to formally say, we think it would be important for people to have individual choice, rather than, and to avoid a mandate is sort of, right? That's the, now, so if we want to formally say, yes, we don't, we think that vaccination should be up to individual families and that choice, that would probably be the direction I would head. Rather than saying, because, you know, rather than saying, "We don't want a vaccination mandate," because the thought is that there are laws being drafted now in committee to mandate vaccination for children. What I'm hearing is that those aren't going anywhere, but we don't know that, right? So the thing I was asked to consider was, you know, would we want to say that, not directly, necessarily directly say, "We don't want a mask mandate." get the masks removed, but, you know, that's different, right, than saying, "We don't want a mandate." So, that's the way I was going to frame the letter.
That's that training that Noreen's given us, right? Right? We're not saying we're against mandates, but we're saying that we don't want mandates. We want choice.
You want choice.
We want choice, right? And that's the better way to say it.
So, you want choice in terms of getting children vaccinated?
You tell, he's drafting a letter that we're all going to have input into, okay? He's not writing it without us, okay?
Right, I haven't seen it yet, yeah.
But it's going to say something to the effect that we want parental choice when it comes to vaccination of children. Am I correct there? Yeah, so, that's what it's going to say. It's not, we're not writing a letter, "We don't want mandates," because there's a law out there that someone proposed, and it got buried in a committee somehow, and hopefully it'll stay there forever and ever and ever and never get out, okay? But as Doc said, crazier things have happened, and who knows? It'll come out of a committee. But we want to go on the record with a letter that says that we are pro-choice on vaccinating children, parental choice. Did I say that correct? Yeah? That's not, you know, but, listen, everybody up here agrees with that.
No.
But we're, we're, that's the way we have to do it.
Really?
Okay? So, yes, you want to add something to that?
Vaccinations? Are you talking about all vaccinations per school, or just this COVID vaccine?
The law that's currently out, sitting out there right now is going to require a mandate for children under 18, am I correct?
COVID vaccine.
Under 12, yeah. Yes, yes, yes. COVID, not other vaccines. Other vaccines, there are laws about those.
They even have that work.
So, okay, so we're working on a draft, we'll come up with the language, and we'll send it off. Anything else?
It would be important that you all get to see it and have input into it and have consensus on it.
Yeah. There's no rush, this doesn't have to happen by Friday, because Friday's a holiday. Okay. Anything else? Okay. So, we got comments from the Board, we did committees, we did everything, I guess we're at the end. I'll just make one announcement, because a question has come up about the open board position, and just to update the public, that nine people applied for the position, one withdrew at the last minute, and eight people were interviewed over several nights a few weeks ago, and the Board has deliberated a little bit. The Board is, still has to have one more meeting about deliberation, but we expect an announcement probably next week. We don't want to do it this week because of the holiday. So, next week, we will be making our announcement as to the open position to replace Rob Son. So, okay? Anything else? Okay, a motion for exec session, because we have some personal matters to talk about. Kristi?
My first.
Jackie second. All in favor? Good. Thank you, thank you all.